The Rotary Club of Cupertino presents City Council Candidate Forum 2016, featuring the eight candidates running for Cupertino City Council. And now Rotary Club of Cupertino President Judy Wilson.
Hi, everyone. I'm Judy Wilson and I am President of the Cupertino Rotary. Today, I'm proud to announce that we are hosting a candidate's forum for the Cupertino City Council election. I would like to introduce Phil Johnson, who has generously agreed to be our moderator today. A word about Phil, he has served in various capacities for the city of Cupertino as a member of the Architecture and Site Control Committee and the Planning Committee, and was a member of our Cupertino City Council from 1980 to 1989. And he served as mayor in 1985. So Phil will introduce our candidates and explain the format for today. Thank you, Phil.
Okay, thank you Judy, and thank you all for being here today. Hope we have a good session and get to know our candidates. They're seated alphabetically, so sorry, Chris.
Always.
But here to my left, our first candidate is Parth Marwad. And he is a student and is getting involved in the city at a very young age. We have David Fung, an engineering consultant. We have next to him Jerry Liu, who is an engineering manager. And we have our incumbent Rod Sinks. And then we have Val. Val Vatul is retired. And then finally, we have Chris, and Chris has been a previous council member and mayor. Now, David, the city manager just told me that the meeting last night ended at 1:00. So are you sure you want this job?
Oh, I know. Well.
Okay. A little about the format. You know, we don't have a lot of time, so I'm going to try and go quickly. I'm pretty neutral. I can't vote Cupertino. So the questions are fair. There's no opening or closing statements. Each candidate has previously been told about the first two questions that I will ask. The first two questions have two minutes in order to answer, but you know, short is always good. So... And then after that, I'm going to mix it up with different questions. A minute answer, 30 seconds, 15 seconds. And so we're going to be very time-sensitive throughout. So... And the questions are broad-based. You know, not only do we have Cupertino residents here, but we have residents and members of the club that are from, you know, surrounding communities. So with that, real quickly, the first question, and we'll go in order, but the first question that I have for everybody is what makes you uniquely qualified to be on the Cupertino Council? Starting with you, Parth.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Phil and Rotary, for hosting this event. I think this is the best way to talk to voters with a firsthand approach. So I think the decision for Valco is a community decision that we have to make by coming together. And what I usually tell voters is we have two very successful development projects. One in Los Altos, which is a small-town development, and one at Santa Ana Row. I'm not here to tell you that one is better than the other, but I think that it's important for us to come together as a community and decide what direction do we want to see Valco in. Having grown up in Los Altos, I know that I enjoyed downtown, the downtown Los Altos that they were building because it was a place for me and my friends to hang out. That is why I support development at the existing Valco site because I think that the site has laid kind of, laid dormant for a long time now. And it's important for the community to come together and decide what we need to do for the Valco Shopping Center. Having lived in Cupertino for about eight years, one of the only reasons that I used to go to Valco was to go to AMC Theaters. And in my mind, in the mind of many of my friends and the younger people in Cupertino, we're willing to drive the extra 10 minutes to Valley Fair or Stanford Shopping Center to do some sort of shopping because of the advanced choice. So in my opinion, I think we need to look at different uses of Valco aside from the retail that some community members do want. I also think that by allowing Apple to build a campus here, we need to provide infrastructure around Apple so that the Apple employees can spend their money in Cupertino, which can have a direct benefit to Cupertino residents. So I think it's important for us to look at all of the issues when deciding what we want to do with Valco. I'm not here to tell you to vote one way or the other on an initiative, but I'm here to tell you that it's important for all of us to get involved and get educated about these issues. And then we can make an educated decision when we go to the voting polls on which development of Valco we support. And lastly, it's important for us to remember that we all want what's best for the future of Cupertino and to keep that in mind when talking about the future of Valco. Thank you.
Okay, next. And again, the question is what makes you uniquely qualified?
All right. Everybody up here, I believe, would bring unique viewpoints and insights to the city and to the council. I have a wealth of engagement, involvement, and experience, but the most important thing I would bring to the council is my wider view of the role of public service. We all understand the importance of listening to all the voices in our community and acting responsibly on their behalf. That's critically important, but I believe there's a broader responsibility to be an advocate for the systems of government and to be an educator on how the system works. The formality of government is complicated and can be extremely frustrating for first timers. How can you even ask the council a question or get an answer? I believe much of the conflict between residents and government today stems from an incomplete, an incomplete understanding of how things work, which is then cast as a lack of responsiveness or transparency. People come to City Hall with a desire to affect change. I will work with all parties to help them understand the system, set expectations, act effectively, and get better results. Even with its warts, I believe our representative democracy and public process are the best ways to make good policy decisions, and I want our people to feel confident that that serves them fairly. I know this works because I'm a product of this kind of education. Eight years ago, I was a newcomer at City Hall with a controversial issue. I had frustrations and setbacks, but with the help of commissioners, city staff, and councilmen, I learned how to work the system, build support, and ultimately reach a good outcome for the city. In the years since, my experiences have allowed me to help become an effective advocate for good causes and a mentor to affect change in public safety, our parks, and elsewhere. As a community, we make better decisions when we can reach consensus. And consensus only comes with engagement. We've never needed faith in the public process more than we do today. And I believe I'm uniquely qualified to raise the discourse and build that trust. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Jerry?
All right. So first, I'd like to thank the Cupertino Rotarians for having us here today and really appreciate the free lunch. So thank you. So I've had, you know, people come up to me and say, you know, those Measure C people are saying nice things about you. Are you going to stand for that? And I've also had friends come up to me and, you know, they see me in a photo with certain council members, and they ask me, "How come you're in the pocket of developers?" So I think what differentiates me in this campaign this time is I will be an independent voice to work with all sides on an issue or on issues. Let me tell you why I can beat this bridge. All right, so I've been involved in a number of community projects. I've taught first graders how to use Macintoshes, and I've sold books and knickknacks and lemonades for, you know, to raise money for charity. I've even worked with the librarians to bring a first-ever overnight hackathon to our library. So basically, I engage people on a very fundamental personal level, and I really believe in getting things done. For this election, I have the endorsement of three of the five current council members: Mayor Barry Chang, and council members Gilbert Wong and Darcy Paul. And if you follow, you know, any sort of city council proceedings, you know they have very different personalities and different views on topics. But I'm able to bring them together and have them support me in my campaign because they've worked with me. They know that I'm capable, I'm fair, and I care about Cupertino. I've also had the endorsement of both the business and the labor communities. I have the sole endorsement from the Sal Bay Labor Council as well as the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce. And this is another data point that I can work with people with different perspectives. And so finally, I'm committed to maintaining a fair playing field for everybody. So a woman named Evelyn Beatrice Hall once said, "I disapprove of what you say, but I will defend to the death your right to say it." And this is a kind of independent voice that I'll bring to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Rod, over to you.
Thank you so much, and thanks to the Rotary Club. First, I have deep roots in the community. I've been a YMCA Adventure Guides leader, growing the program significantly to 200 fathers and 200 daughters. I've been a Girl Scout volunteer, introducing girls to orienting and backpacking. I've been scoutmaster of a troop of 130 boys for five and a half years, stepped down when I got too busy as mayor. I'm a longstanding first robotics mentor and judge. We host a three-day competition in San Jose every April, and we help over 50 teams with everything from business plans to engineering design to outreach. And these teams include the Girl Scouts, Homestead High, Lynbrook, Monovista, Cupertino High. I've organized scrimmage for these, many of these teams, the last three years at the Fall Festival. I've attended many events at parks, houses of worship, ceremonies for Eagle Scouts and the Girl Scouts receiving the Gold Award. I speak at our schools on clean energy and transportation, helping educate them. Members of the Rotary Club know me as one of your own and a board member. These activities are important because they give me an opportunity to listen to residents who have busy lives and often don't have time, if ever, to make it to a council meeting. And I think that's important because I need to represent the entire city, not just people that come to our meetings. The second thing is I've demonstrated ability to listen, collaborate, and lead implementation on solutions to some of our toughest challenges. I've done that with mayors in the North County and West Valley cities on transportation, negotiating $248 million in funding for our interchanges and roads in Cupertino alone and $350 for transit plan for 40 years along Highway 85 but never built. I've also done that with mayors in Mountain View and Sunnyvale to plan and bring to life Silicon Valley Clean Energy, which will bring you all and our businesses less expensive and carbon-free electricity to 11 cities in 2017. And I've also done that on the Air District Board, where we have a plan to reduce human health impact and risks by an order of magnitude.
Okay, thank you, Rod. Val, over to you.
Good afternoon. I'm Val Your Powell, and I would bring fun to the city council, some fun. What I have to offer you is awareness. Awareness, awareness. This is something that I've been looking at for a long time. It's been studying the financial system, the banking system, chemtrails, geoengineering, the GMO foods, fluoride in the water, all these things that are affecting us. And I think we've gotten to the point where these things don't matter, but in the way they do matter to our survival. So I'd be bringing in some awareness into this factor that everybody is really, is affected by. My son and I took a hike on the Pacific Crest Trail two years ago. We went from Mexico to Canada. It was 2,650 miles. And I saw a lot of the wilderness, saw a lot of the beautiful ecosystems out there. And then I come back to the city and it's just, it's a lot different, you know. What we've done with our so-called progress is quite amazing how we've lost this connection to the land. And I'm not advocating going back to living in a primitive way, but I'm just, you know, there's things that we could do, make better choices in terms of looking at how we, the decisions we make and what we're doing. So that's what I'm here for, to just connect with you all and see how we can make better choices in terms of living with what we've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Val. Chris?
All right. Thank you, Rotary Club of Cupertino. I think the qualities that make a great council representative are experience, background, and personality. In terms of experience, I've had the privilege of serving on city council for eight years. Five years working on Cupertino's parking rec commission, five years on Santa Clara Parking Rec Commission, and I've served as a former vice chair of a VTA advisory board, the county's recycling and reduction commission, and president of the city's association of Santa Clara County. Cupertino is not an isolated town with isolated issues. To be an effective councilperson, experience has allowed me to be creative in solutions and understand our problems on a regional level. Traffic, for example, can necessarily be solved in our city alone. It requires working with the VTA and other cities in our region to come out with effective, long-term solutions. In terms of my background, a councilperson makes decisions on behalf of the community and has to really rely on what they know to be right and what they feel in their heart is best for the community. Whether it's as a mom, I place such emphasis on protecting the quality of education in our city. Or as a software engineer, wanting to support innovation or an immigrant that understands the difficulty of assimilation in our community. Or a 30-year resident of Cupertino that has enjoyed our park and public safety, I feel that my shared background with so many of you has really helped me in the past making good decisions on the council. So I believe my track record and experience, my background, are what would allow me to be a well-qualified representative for you on city council. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Second question that's been shared with everybody has to do with Valco. And, you know, in the beginning, Valco was controversial. Today, you know, there's some controversy regarding Valco that I really didn't want to get into initiatives. But the broader question for all of us is I'd be interested to know what your vision is for Valco, your general vision for Valco. And we'll start with you, Chris, and work our way down this way.
All right. My vision of Valco. I'm fully supportive of the revitalization of a Valco and agree that Valco ought to be revamped in some way. However, I don't believe the current plan on the table is what best for our community. I really think we ought to be patient in how we develop the 58 acres and make sure we are getting the best design, the best mix, and the best deal for our city. My vision for Valco is a downtown area that is primarily as retail and commercial emphasis center of Cupertino with ample spaces for civic and public use as well. I'm not opposed to a mix of housing, hotel, and offices on-site, but it has to be the right mix with a focus on retail primarily. The proposal on the table cuts current retail space almost exactly in half and creates 2 million square foot of office space that is almost as much as Apple Campus 2. To me, that sort of mix has a heavy emphasis on a large office park that will potentially intensify daily traffic in the area and escalate our future housing requirements even more to accommodate those potential 10,000 additional workers in Cupertino. The right mix would maintain Valco as a retail emphasis center first with less emphasis on office and housing. There would be ample parking available and plenty of space dedicated for community use. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Val, your thoughts?
Okay, if I had it my way, it'd be a food forest. It'd be aquaculture. It'd be an open-space park. But, you know, we're looking at everybody's input. And I'm especially looking at, or I would be looking at, the youth commission and the children, what they have to offer because they are the future. They would be bringing up suggestions that we all here as adults don't even consider. So I suggest asking the youth, asking the children, what do they want? Because they're going to be living with this. I mean, we're happy with all this progress that we're making, but again, what does this progress, what does this progress really mean? What are we really doing here to the environment? I support, I support the environment, the animals, and the children, and just the plants, and the sky, and the land. So these things that we're doing, they're okay. There's nothing negated here, but we could make better choices again. So again, I'd be listening to the community. Forming commissions, more one-on-one, more like communicating with, not being so official, you know, communicating with people and groups in the community. Really looking for responses and... And there's ways to do this that are not, are out of the box, you could say, but they're very common sense approaches that people don't realize. So that's why I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you, Val. Rod?
Thanks. After 20-plus years of slow decline at Valco, I, like most residents, am happy to see the prospect of something new. Everyone in the city wants vibrant retail in Cupertino, and the question is really how we get it. So experts on retail, as well as Sand Hill's fiercest rivals, all say that the only feasible option is retail embedded in a mixed-use project. And there's been no new retail mall of Valco's size built in the United States in over 15 years. Retailers want to be located near other successful retail. Valley Fair became that destination in our area with its superior location at the intersection of two freeways and its well-timed renovation by Westfield, one of the premier mall builders and operators. So beyond those basics, what would I like to see at Valco? I mean, that's not really the right question. The right question is what do a majority of our residents want to see at Valco? Now, the site's 50 acres. The developer proposes an audacious project with a total investment of $3 billion. Is it the right project? Does it improve our quality of life? I respect that residents have widely varying opinions. And under a normal development process, which I prefer, we would have brought the developer and the community together to reach consensus that a majority of our residents would support. I also expect that on such a large project, once we'd had negotiation and finished the full environmental review, a public process, the council would have called for an advisory vote from our residents. Instead, the normal process this year has been preempted with competing initiatives that present choices that are worlds apart. And I'm not a fan of doing land use planning at the ballot box, but having said that, we're in the process we're in. I encourage you to vote and make choices in line with your vision for the city. And I assure you that the council and all of us are listening. You can go to my website for the retail report and the city's impartial analysis of the initiatives. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Jerry?
All right. So first of all, as Rod said, we have valid initiatives related to Valco in this November election. And if I'm elected, I will work 200% to fully implement the will of the voters, regardless of my own personal views. And if the issue isn't settled after the election, I will work to bring together residents, property owners, and other stakeholders to build a combined vision for Valco. Now, when I think about my own personal vision for Valco, a couple of words come to mind. The first one is pride. You know, with all this going back and forth, the thing I really want Valco to be is a place that we can all be proud of. The kind of place that we brag to our out-of-town friends about, like Apple Campus 2. Another word that I would have would be community. I can see Valco being a gathering place for our community to congregate, to do business, to live, to work, to play. It should be the kind of place that teenagers and young people want to hang out with their friends and at the same time be friendly to families and older folks. And the third word I would have would be balance. I know there are some folks who like to see all retail at the property, and there are other folks who like to see an office park. Myself, I'm in the middle somewhere, right? I think, you know, people like Santa Ana Row, and I think they like that charm of Santa Ana Row because when you're there, the design feels balanced. And that's what I would like to see for a new Valco. And then the fourth and final word that I would think of would be Cupertino. Okay, Cupertino is a very unique place because of our diversity, because we're home to the most valuable corporation on earth, and because of our world-class education system. And I think any sort of project at Valco should take these factors into consideration and be something unique to Cupertino that speaks to our core culture. So pride, community, balance, and Cupertino. That would summarize my vision for a future Valco. Thank you.
Thank you. David?
As a 30-year resident of Cupertino, I've known Valco when it was a destination, and I've watched it decline for more than 20 years. It's time for Valco to be reborn as a vital part of our community. Today, the internet connects us as citizens of the world, but it also separates us into islands. Humans are inherently social animals. Our shared spaces define us as a community. Here in Cupertino, you see this in our love for the places we interact with each other: our parks, our schools, our library, and I hope at the next Valco. In a town that's famous for creating the future, I want Valco to be aspirational rather than just adequate. I want to see stores and restaurants, but also public spaces to congregate. Valco should be a place where you want to spend a day rather than an hour. It should inclusively reflect our multi-ethnic and multi-generational population. And it should meet all our city's needs with mixed use, including residents and workspaces alongside shopping and entertainment. Many of these goals are embodied today in the Measure D proposal. Because I believe so strongly in the traditional public approval and consensus-building process, I'm opposed to both the initiatives before us. I do believe in many parts of D, from the lead platinum design to the integration of a high school innovation center into a shopping and work hub, but I have very real concerns about the mix of uses and resultant traffic. Initiatives bypass the public process and have created rifts that will be hard to heal. In the idealized world of this question, our community will work together to learn, negotiate, and build consensus. And I hope in this idealized world that we might seek incremental changes rather than starting from a clean sheet of paper because we've all waited so long as a community to move forward. I have a rich history of public service focused on building vision and consensus, and I want to dedicate my experience and energy to moving forward on Valco's rebirth.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, David. Parth, you've talked about Valco a little.
So I just, I just wanted to apologize. My notes are out of order. But let me, let me, let me get to my point. What makes me unique is that I'm good at adapting to situations. So let me tell you why I'm unique while also telling you why I support Valco. So as many of you know, I'm a young person. I'm only 20 years old. And that brings a unique perspective to the decision of Valco because I'm one of the people who's going to be living here for the next 10, for the next six, seven decades of my life. Now, talking to many young people, most of them are busy in college right now. But when they do come back for vacation and they ask me, "Hey, Parth, where do you want to go hang out?", I always have to suggest locations outside of Cupertino because either they're closed or they're already overfilled, such as all of the coffee shops. So as a student in this community, I can see that we need a new place for the community to hang out. So what else makes me unique, what else makes me unique and also relates to Valco is I'm very transparent about my views on Valco, and I want voters to know when they elect me what my views are. So I am no on Measure C primarily because I believe that we need to let the city and the city officials make decisions on ordinances and city guidelines. We cannot allow ballot initiatives to do so. And I bring the transparency because I'm also very open about being yes on Measure D. Now, I know that may not be the most politically correct way to say it, but politically correct thing to say on this stage, but yes, I am in favor of Measure D. And the reason being is that as a young person, I want to see some development and growth in Cupertino. Many, many kids my age don't have the opportunity to come here before you and explain to them, explain to you guys why they want Valco to happen because, as I said, many of them are gone away to college and come back very few times a year. But I think it's very important for us to take into account their decisions because all of us want to do what's best for the future generations of Cupertino. And if we don't develop a place where the future generations want to live, then we're going to be, we will face a serious issue in this community. But as I said earlier, and I will say again, it's important for voters to get educated with a firsthand experience, whether it be reading the Cupertino website or whether it be reading ballot initiatives because oftentimes in translation, the message can get lost. Thank you.
Thank you, Parth. Glad to see we're back on track. So now I've got a question for just two people, for Chris and for Rod. You spent thousands of hours doing city work. Is there one decision or one building you regret approving? Chris, what do you think?
What I regret...
And 30 seconds.
30 seconds. Okay. So if I have to say something I regret, I regret that I did not make Cupertino's library bigger, larger, and enough for the future. Library has been like 15 years almost, and now we're experiencing the parking limitation and traffic arrangement around there. So if I could go back, I would like to give it more budget and make a bigger scale for that project so that we won't face the issues today.
Thank you. Rod?
Excuse me. I believe in good planning. The council on a 4-1 vote, I was the dissent actually, approved a Hyatt House Hotel. It's not yet built. It's right at 280 and Wolf. It's adjacent to Valco. I was the no vote. Our rules allow a height of 45 feet, which can be 60 feet with ground floor retail. And I didn't think that a vending machine for razors and toothbrushes and a breakfast bar constituted retail. I thought, and perhaps more importantly, I thought we would have had a better integrated plan if it would have come at the same time as Valco. You know, we had a chance to do that at Sache Way to get the parking work and...
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Next question, one minute, and this is going to be hard because these are big issues. We need, we need more housing. We need more affordable housing. On the other hand, we've got problems with traffic today, too much traffic. So they're kind of polar opposites. So I was going to ask three of you to give us some solutions that you might have for housing and some solutions... for housing and some solutions that you might have for traffic. And so I thought I would start with traffic first. And for the first three, in one minute, any solutions, local or regional?
So is this traffic and housing or just traffic?
You have traffic. The first three have traffic.
Okay. So I'm a big supporter of Measure B, and the reason being is I think we need to invest in alternative methods of transportation in this area. We're in a transit desert here, and I face this issue on the daily basis when I commute to San Jose State from here. I've looked at many options of public transportation, and unless I'm willing to sit in a bus for upwards of two hours, there's not that many ways for me to get to San Jose State without having to drive my car in the traffic. So I think that itself represents the problem. I also attended Deanser Community College for one year, and I talked to many of my friends over there who commute from different parts of the East Bay, and they all face the same issue where they're forced to drive to Cupertino because we don't have adequate public transportation in this area to really allow these people to take public transportation. So I am a supporter of Measure B, and I will support transportation projects that can help increase mobility in Cupertino and lower the dependency on cars.
Perfect. Thank you. David?
I've spent a lot of time knocking on doors lately, and one of the things that was a surprise to me is the top issue across town has been traffic. It's not just congested freeways, but it's the amount of increasing, growing traffic on local streets all around town. This is a regional problem. It's not one that we can solve on our own here in Cupertino. And the politics of Santa Clara County make it actually quite challenging to address. So I commend Barry Chang and Rod for their champion Cupertino issues on the VTA. This has really made a big difference. If elected, I'd want to continue that strong presence on the VTA to make sure that Cupertino's interests are represented. What would I do to address traffic? One of the first things I would do is really try to work on getting rapid transit happening for Deanser College. There are twenty thousand kids who attend there every day. Many of them probably would prefer not to own a car or to drive a car. So there's an incredible opportunity there if we can get effective transit there. I think we also need to work on public education and consensus. And there's an idea here, more housing will... You know, you often hear... Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you. Jerry, a couple ideas on the traffic issue?
Sure. I think David and I have been canvassing the same houses because when I talk to people, traffic is also on the top of their list. I've spoken to council members in Palo Alto, Mountain View, Sunnyvale. When I ask them, "What are the top issues in your city?", traffic is also always at the top. So just thought a couple of ideas. I think, you know, we didn't get in this mess in a year, and we're not going to fix it in a year either, right? And so there are definitely regional things that we need to do. Parth talked about Measure B. I think in terms of putting in infrastructure, light rail buses, that's something that we need to push for. It's not going to happen next month. I think a couple of other things we could look at. One is basically providing alternative forms of transportation. There's the really nice bike plan that's put out by the Bike and Pedestrian Commission that I would highly support. There are things that we can do with technology to enable ride-sharing and carpooling, and these are basically ways to make better use of the existing infrastructure. And then lastly, I think there are things within our city that's within our control. I'm a parent of two daughters in elementary school. I get stuck in traffic every morning. A lot of parents do. And I think there are things that we can do to work with the school districts to at least alleviate problems around schools. That's within our control. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. And so now, the next question, starting with Rod, would be any solutions, any ideas regarding the housing issues that we have?
Not transit but housing?
Pardon?
Not transit but housing?
Yeah, I'm switching. So the next three will talk about housing.
Okay, fine.
Even though I agree you probably would want transportation.
I recognize that our voters are really concerned about a school impact, and I've worked to make sure that as we consider what we might build in town, that our schools are made more than whole. So I've been working very hard on that. But I would say this, if you consider that there are eighty thousand new jobs being built right now to the north of us, not covered, not existing, but new jobs being created in the north of us, and that most of the housing stock is being built to the south of us in Almond Valley and Point South, the only real way to address jobs, housing imbalance isn't simply to say, "Let's build a lot more housing in Cupertino." It's got to be transportation. So these things are, in fact, intertwined. Now, I've authored a, co-authored a ten-minute video with a Stanford professor named Stefan Heck. You can find it on the Cupertino City Channel's YouTube feed. Regional growth requires regional solutions, which is why I negotiated for our fair share in the latest measure with all the North County and West Valley mayors and why I got together and chair a body called the SR eighty-five Policy Advisory Board.
These are big questions, hard to answer in one minute. Val, your thoughts about housing?
Well, I haven't really thought about it too much, housing, right now, but I support the green technologies, the green energy, you know, the clean energy builders and organizations that offer this, and I think that would be my recommendation to look at, when housing does happen, to look at these people, these organizations reclaiming, you know, reclaiming some lumber and things that are thrown away, recycle. Going back, well, to stick to housing, fifteen seconds, okay? It's a big subject, yes. I just, you know, just leave it at that, but I just, again, I support, you know, less Wi-Fi, more clean energy.
Okay. Thank you, Val. Chris?
Okay. So Cupertino has experienced a twenty percent increase in its population in ten years, and this doesn't include a ten to twelve thousand's increase in families coming with the completion of Apple's new campus. So I feel Cupertino should only be planning for housing growth that is required of us with an emphasis on the supporting projects with senior housing and affordable housing. I believe in smart and responsible growth. We have to evaluate the locations in our city that puts the least amount of stress to our city, whether it's the traffic or other resources. Medium density with a fair amount setback from the major corridors in our city would allow for us to accommodate our regional requirement to grow while allowing us the best opportunity to plan for transportation options and create a more walkable area in our city.
Perfect. Thank you, Chris. Next question is for everyone, one minute. There are many needs for capital improvements in Cupertino. There's been discussions in the past about the city hall upgrade, more parking for the library. We've got street improvements that could help with traffic. We've got bike trails, local and regional, more parks. What one project, assuming you could fund it, what one project would be your favorite in the next four years? And we'll start with Parth.
Okay. So one of the projects that I really want to accomplish if I'm elected is expansion of the library at Cupertino. As someone who's spent thousands of hours in the Cupertino library, in the Cupertino library as a student, I know that the library is already a wonderful place and could be made even better if we were to accommodate for some more collaborative workspace within the library. The reason I say this is in today's schools, we're learning more and more on how we can collaborate with our friends and our classmates on working together to build. And the Cupertino library, especially the teen center, which is for high schoolers, has one room with four tables that can accommodate for a maximum of fifteen people to collaboratively work. We, as high schoolers, tend to make a little bit more noise than most, and so it's very hard for us to talk in the other areas with tables because we don't want to disturb anybody else around. So one of the main projects and something that I really want to see happen in Cupertino, whether I'm elected or not, is the expansion of the library to incorporate a collaborative workroom space.
Perfect. Thank you. David?
I also would focus on the civic center area. I believe that the library is truly a hub, a community hub of the town. And so one of the things that had been discussed in that last city center project was the expansion to increase facilities at the library. I believe a very important part of that as well, and extremely controversial part in that discussion, was around increasing parking. The parking situation is very, very difficult, and it would be great if there were ways or alternate ways to get to the library and to city hall. Unfortunately, the way we do it today is with cars, so I think that trying to find a good solution, a good parking solution is a very important part of that as well. I also believe the infrastructure needs of the city really do call for an improvement to the city hall and update, in particular around the emergency operations center. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So we go to Jerry.
Sure. So as Chair of the Library Commission and Vice President of the Library Foundation, I'm very happy to see so much support for the library here up here at this table. I'm just going to just add something to what Parth said, which is we really need an expansion there. The library district has actually decided to freeze the current service programs that we offer at the library because we can't get enough room. So I strongly support what Parth is saying in terms of the library room expansion. What I also want to talk about is basically that my main project probably would be, we need more green space over on the east side of the city. And so there's been talk of acquiring some land to build a park, a Lawrence Smithy Park over on the east side. You know, if you Google it, people were talking about it ten, fifteen years ago, and I think it's, we really need to move on this. So this would be my main priority for capital improvement if I were elected. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Rod?
Yeah. So I agree we need more park space, particularly in the east, but the first thing, our first responsibility as a city is to protect public safety, and that includes being prepared to help residents in the event of a disaster. We need to be able to issue building permits, know what's in the city physically, have a good inventory, and then be operative if our residents call on us. So fixing the civic center, including more community space, but having a real EOC to federal standards is critical. We need more parking in that location. With the new bike plan we've passed, that will take some load off of people coming, going back and forth to the library with protected bikeways. So that protected bikeway system is a key component of making the city more livable. But you should know that city hall, its fire suppression system is on its last legs. We're over capacity. We're now leasing space in other places. We don't have enough backup power to even keep the AC on during a grid failure. So the place is inhabitable when residents might count on us the most.
Okay. Thank you, Rod. Val?
Okay. Capital improvements. My view on that is let's improve human capital. And Kelsey, my campaign manager here, and I just came back from Portland, and they have this city repair project where they paint murals in intersections of streets. And they get together, neighbors get together, and what it does is it slows down traffic. You get to know your neighbor, reduces crime. People share, start sharing their skills and tools. Birthday parties happen there. People get together. There's kiosks, there's libraries. So, hey, there's something everybody can do themselves and on an individual basis. So this is, when we're talking about problems of the city, it's really an individual problems. It's you all people that are, you know, we're not going to do it up here. It's based with you and what you are going to do. So this project is something I promote.
Okay. Thank you. Chris?
So I repeat it again, our city has grown by twenty percent in population in just ten years, and we don't necessarily have the capital improvement to match that. The library, for instance, we have all heard that it's already been around for almost fifteen years, and we need more parking, more parking, and more space. The other thing that's important to me is the city's disaster budget. We have to make sure that we are ready in case of any major disasters. In general, I think capital improvements in infrastructure are absolutely necessary. So that...
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Next question. This is more or less a yes or no sort of answer, which I know is always difficult, but, you know, since there are areas of the city that don't have curves and gutters and we don't have the, you know, the trail pathways that we need, would you support the city using eminent domain in certain cases like that? And let's start with Rod. Yes or no?
Yes, in very limited cases, as last resort.
Okay. Val?
No.
Chris?
Yeah, sure answer, yes.
Okay. Parth?
No.
David?
Yes.
Okay. Jerry?
I walk down Orange every morning. Once a month, I almost get run over, but despite that, probably not. Eminent domain is pretty, yeah, up there for me, so only restricted cases.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you. Another real quick question. What do you think your total campaign budget will be? How much are you going to raise and spend? Parth?
Of course, it depends on how generous the voters are in Cupertino, but I'm hoping to raise about thirty thousand dollars and spend somewhere between twenty to twenty-five thousand.
Okay. David?
Yes. I believe the budget traditionally has shown that it would be in the range of up to thirty, slightly over thirty thousand. I also am intending to, you know, spend around twenty-five thousand.
Got it. Okay. Jerry, what about you?
I've raised about twenty-five. How much I'll get to, I think it depends on how generous you folks are today. Thanks.
Okay. Rod?
I'm two-thirds of the way to the goal of thirty-three thousand. I checked the box and said I would live with that, and as in 2011, I'm funded by grassroots contribution. I'm not funded by developers, so I think that's important for everybody to know. I've made that statement very clearly.
Okay. Thank you. Val?
I am the new management, the new politics. It's the shoestring budget here. It's nothing, really.
Chris?
All right. I have signed it and agreed the limited expenditures of thirty-three thousand. So far, I have raised only about ten percent of that, but I believe voters will vote for a person that has experience with, you know, similar background and personalities to be their representative. So I have faith on our voters. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Another quick question, yes or no? Some of you have touched on the ballot or the initiative process, and we do have a couple items on the ballot. In general, do you see this process as being helpful or harmful? Let's start with Parth.
As someone who recently started voting two years ago, I see this process as the community reaching, the community trying to get a decision from the community. So some people will say that governance by initiatives is not the right way, but in my opinion, if the democracy allows for us to do it, then we should be, then citizens have the right to put forth initiatives, and it's our decision on whether we want to support that initiative or not.
Okay. Thank you. Next. David?
Citizens certainly have the right to bring an initiative, and I'll certainly honor the result of any vote that happens. However, I really believe that we have a representational system that works, and I think that that works better in terms of building, getting to an intelligent solution and building consensus. So I'm a big supporter of that and not much of a supporter for initiatives.
Okay. Jerry?
Yeah, I don't like a lot of the rhetoric language that goes around, and I think that comes from the initiative, but I'm appreciative of the sponsors for putting these initiatives on the ballot so that we can really find out what the voters want. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Rod.
Well, you know, our voters are some of the smartest in the world, and I appreciate that they have the capacity to look at these things. But I will tell you that there are two other developments that have also filed to be initiatives, and I just don't think we're bound to get a process where the community comes together in general in the initiative process. It's very hard to make these complex decisions, even for council members. So, yeah, I prefer the regular city process. And you'll note that my council didn't take a position for or against the initiatives, and generally, I think all of us like that city process.
Okay. Thank you. Val? Any comments?
Yeah, I'm not negating what you said, Rod, but it's just not complicated at all. These things aren't complicated. Politics isn't complicated, you know? It's like really simple. And, yeah, I support anything that people can do for themselves and not rely on the government.
And Chris?
Usually, the initiatives are a simple answer, yes or no, increasing tax or longer hours, community service, and that type of thing. But the C and D, the difficulty of bringing the issues like C and D to the ballots and[1748.61] But it's C and D, the difficulty of bringing the issues like C and D to the ballots, making sure that, we have to make sure voters truly understand the positives and negatives of the choice that they're presented with. I think the, in general, I believe representative governments can help with this kind of situation. And then they, the voters just trust their representative they're putting in office to make the best decision based on their background experience and, you know, so and so. So, of course, that representative has to do their homework, listen to the community, and make what they think is the right thing for, or the right choice and the right thing for the community. But for C and D, however, I think it's just been a great example of our democratic process.
Okay, thank you. Quite a few questions from the audience. Dealing, you know, with the polarized electorate, what's your decision-making process? Has a presidential campaign, and the tone impacted the local level? And I think out of that mix of questions, one is particularly helpful, would be, can you give us a decision where you had a diffused or hostile audience, and you turned it into something positive? A minute apiece.
Start with me, okay.
Well, let's, let's start with Chris. Start with Chris. It looked like I'm picking on Parth.
Yeah. All right, so I have experience, I've served on the city council for eight years, and we, we, we heard angry residents come forward, we heard different opinions, community members presented to the council. They did not necessarily agree with your opinion, not necessarily making sense. And we all know that sometimes a lot of people come forward with NIMBY issues, and so how to turn it from negative to positive, then, you know, we just have to sit in their shoes and then understanding where they're coming from, and then trying to compromise and, and a minimum to make them understand that we're making decision for the entire community, not just for the small group or a small neighborhood.
Val?
What was the question?
What was the question, question again?
The best question is, have you ever been in a situation where people, two opposite sides, and you brought people together, you formed a consensus, an example?
If there's a confrontation or something like that, riots?
Thinking of the community?
Throwing tomatoes?
It could also be at home.
Okay, well, inherently, if, you know, if there's, the idea is you support each other, you're supporting each other, so if there's some kind of confrontation or disagreement, you know, if, that's, that's to be worked out between the two parties, but see, my, my point here before was the political system is such that it's like, it's disjointed, or it's just, you feel like you're, you're not a participant, you're just watching the whole thing going on, so again, I have only short time. I could actually expand on this quite a bit, but I don't have the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Rod, one example of bringing people together?
Sure. Well, I've sat down with people that are very skeptical about development and what's going on, and they have some core anxieties about impact to schools, about all this traffic congestion, and what can we do to fix this? I think most of our voters are really bright, they're educated, and if you help them understand the issues, explain logically, most people are open-minded and willing to listen, okay? So I, I think that's key. We need dialogue. FUHSD has recently done a lot of that with their process surrounding the controversy at Lindbrook and how to deal with declining enrollment there. I think we need to sit down and listen, I think the city can do a better job of that. I've had a lot of people say, we just gave up on solving transportation, and we just can't take anymore. And, you know, when they've looked at our ten-minute video, they've said, wow, okay, we get it. There's, there are examples in the world of how to fix this. And so, these are the sorts of techniques, I think, that work.
Thank you.
So I'm fairly active in my, I have two girls, they attend elementary school in the Cupertino Union. And last year, we had a case where we had a new principal come in, and there were some policies about pickup, you know, how to pick up your kids after school. And there was a small misunderstanding rolled into a really big thing. I mean, you can, you can Google it, and I'm not gonna get into that. But what ended up happening is you had a group of parents, which ended up being very much against the administration. And I work with those parents, I'm on the PTA, and at the same time, I work with the administration quite a bit. And they're not the evil people that, you know, some people may think. And so, you know, what I ended up doing is I invite, you know, we, I, I made a lunch date with one of the parents and the principal, we went to Hobie, so I remember. And then we basically sat down, the three of us, we had a two-and-a-half-hour lunch. And I remember the first hour, both of them were just talking to me, right? But then we started with fundamentally, why are we here? It's because for the kids. And then building from that, and at the, towards the end, they were talking to each other. They weren't, you know, it's almost like I wasn't there, and that's something that I'm, I feel good about. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, David?
I touched on this a little bit in my, in my first statement. My first major involvement, I had had long involvement with the schools, but my first major involvement with the city was actually in a controversy about eight years ago related to dogs running off-leash in parks here in, in the city. And Chris was involved, and Orin as well. In this, initially, there was a group of residents who wanted to make a suggestion. We had had concerns, it didn't seem like that was going to work very well. I went down to City Hall just to find out what was going on, found very quickly that, that the proposal that was before us, which I thought wasn't really gonna be something that would happen, was something that, that was being considered. So, we looked at, how do we, how do we, how do we address this, how do we work the system? And a big part of that was reaching out, building, building support among the people, learning how the, the process works, and I think we ended up getting a good, a good solution. You know, ultimately, we recognized the people who were opposed to having dogs run in the, unfenced in the parks, recognized the need for that facility, and today we have the Mary Dog Park, which is right by the side. And we worked, I helped support the, the city council in building that.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm sure many of us remember in kindergarten and first grade when the teacher told you that treat others the way you want to be treated. And that's something that really sticks with me because throughout, just recently finishing school, throughout school, you're always put into different things, and you have to remember to treat others the way you want to be treated. And I think the second, the second part, and this will, this will be funny for some of you, is every day I meet voters who tell me I'm too young to, to be running for city council, I'm too young to be getting involved. And that is every day where I, I find someone who I have to convince and really talk to to prove to them that I'm the right representative for this city and that I'm not too young. So I deal with this on a quite daily basis, and thus far, I've been successful in convincing some people that maybe it's time for a fresh new change on city council. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Couple comments, Cupertino is a diverse community, how would you bring people together? So I think I'd like to see everybody take a minute to kind of put it in a rotarian perspective. And Rotary is big on partnerships and projects, and that's a major goal that President Judy has. So is there any community projects, I'm not talking about big capital improvements, it could be social media or whatever. Is there anything that, any idea that you have that would bring groups of people together? And let's start with David and work our way down, and then with Parth.
Well, there are, of course, there are many community projects that we want to undertake, but I think that one of the ones, one of the ones that I think would be an important one to take is my, my son is in high school, and so one of the things that we had often talked about was trying to have, to reach across, you know, to reach across the ethnic, ethnic bounds. And really, one of the things that he had suggested, when he was actually served on the teen commission last year, was to try to do things, to reinstate, they used to have dances, crosstown dances. This is an opportunity for people to meet and interact with, with, with people that they wouldn't normally have, have interacted with. I believe that in a lot of cases, people tend toward, it's very easy to, to tend toward being in an island and trying to, trying to break down those islands and give people an opportunity to interact. Those are, those would be great, and that's true for all ages.
Perfect, okay. Jerry?
So for me, it would be schools. So if you look at the annual, or the twice-a-year Gobi survey that the city runs, forty percent of the residents say that they're in Cupertino because of the schools. Forty-six percent of the households have children, okay? And as an active member of the school PTA, I know that every school has needs, right? In, in the elementary school that my kids go to, it's the reading garden, it's finding volunteers for things like Project Cornerstone. And so what I would propose would be a big project that takes place at twenty-six, thirty different places. You go and visit the schools and figure out what it is they need to have done, right? So, because everybody has different needs. And I find that, you know, this is the same for me, too. At work, it's the best way to bring people together is to give them common goals, common objectives, because I think people are fundamentally good, and a lot of the, a lot of the things that goes on is really about, you know, miscommunication and not understanding each other. So I, I'm very much in favor of something like this, where you get together to do projects, and mine would be schools.
Thank you. Rod, one minute?
Thank you. So, I think connecting people in the city by protected bikeways that feel safe and really are safe is a key priority. You may have seen the green paint around town, we put three miles of it down last year, and five miles of bike buffers and sharrows, and allowing people to safely get around the city, our, our students, from schools to the civic center and beyond, is a key priority of this council. We were one of three cities to win the mayor's challenge last year as my year, in my year as mayor. I'm one of only three cities to win federal government recognition for most improved, and the council's recently passed a very aggressive bike plan to, to get us around north, south, east, west in protected ways. So I think this is a key thing, bringing people to the civic center with more community meeting space, and also greener ways. We've done a great job in the west side of town with Stevens Creek Corridor, we've won a lot of awards for that, the new environmental education center. We need to do the same on the east side of town to the extent possible.
Thank you, Rod. Val?
Food, food brings people together. So, our nonprofit is working with schoolgrown.org. It's a aquaponics organization, nonprofit, that's trying to, it's leasing land from school sites, and it's trying to get all over the country bringing aquaponics to kids, they can learn biology, chemistry, marketing, how to, how to work with, you know, grow and then market the, the produce. So, this is one thing dear to me, too, as well.
Okay, thank you, Val. Chris?
I would use the traffic to be the, the example that we bring all the group together, because the traffic's probably one of the most complex issues that we face in Cupertino. So, we should try, you know, everything to find a solution at all fronts. That meaning, we should evaluate private-public partnership to incentivize a carpooling into Cupertino, or work alongside VTA and other city neighbors to find original solutions. Or with our Rotary Bike Club, I know they're also, they're active, that we get inference on the bike and pedestrian safety. Even in within our community, that we try to, possibly like city-sponsored shuttles for our schools, or possibly shuttle and take residents to Caltrans.
Okay, thank you, Chris. And Parth, you get the last word for today.
Okay, thank you. So the two projects that I think are most important is, we need to reach out to voters. And by, when I say reach out to voters, I don't mean set up commissions and set up meetings. It means the city needs to go to every voter individually, whether it be at their door or via some personal connection. Because like my parents, like most, they, they work and they don't have the time to be involved in the city commissions, but they really do have a voice that they don't know how to get heard, and this is what a lot of people have been telling me. So, it's time, it's time that the city take a different approach to getting the public's input. And the second, more long-term solution that I want to put forth is putting student positions on certain commissions. What this does is, it gets youth interested in local government, because oftentimes, the youth feel that the most local form of government is Congress or, or Senate, and they don't know that the city government actually has the biggest impact on their lives. So I think by allowing them to get involved in city issues from a younger age, not only can the city have different perspectives and different problem-solving solutions, but it also gets the youth involved in local government from a young age to avoid, to avoid them coming when they're older and, and confused or not knowing what's going on. This can really give them an insight into local government. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. We're out of time, I hope that the responses that you heard today are insightful and you learned something. It takes a lot of courage to run for the city council. I mean, it's only at the city council where the public is in your face. It's not like hiding up in Sacramento or Washington DC. They're there in front of you, and so it's not easy. And it takes a lot of time to run, and if you get elected, it takes even more time. So thank you for what you're doing for Cupertino, and I wanted to thank everybody in the audience for being here. And I'm sure they, the candidates can hang around if you want to ask a more intense question than I did, okay? Thank you, everybody.